Hit the start button.
Good evening, or good afternoon. Welcome to the November 3rd, 2020 Lone Tree City Council Study Session. Also, we hope you voted today. Happy Election Day to everyone. This study, this city council study session will be conducted as a virtual meeting held electronically in accordance with council adopted policy number 20-01. Therefore, members of the public must access this meeting via electronic participation. And we, hopefully you are joining us as I speak. Just as a reminder, there is no public comment during study session, as council does not vote during our study sessions. These presentations are for information and discussion only. All right, we are going to jump right in. We actually have a fairly lengthy agenda today. First up is our youth commission update, and Rex Portelet is presenting remotely. So Rex, are you here? Are you, or have you joined?
Yep, I'm right here.
Wonderful. Well, welcome, and we can't wait to hear what's going on with the youth commission.
Thank you, Mayor and members of city council. I'm here this afternoon to give a brief update about what's going on with the youth commission. So we're currently trying to find ways to help Lone Tree businesses after a hard hit from the pandemic, and how to support students in Lone Tree since COVID has completely changed schools. So we've created two surveys. One survey is for the Lone Tree businesses, asking about COVID's impact on them and how the youth commission can help. The other survey is asking students and educators in Lone Tree what the youth commission can do to help them. We've also been discussing how to spread the word about the surveys. We have a few ideas, including posting an infographic on our personal social medias and directly contacting businesses. But we're also contacting Jeff Holwell, the Director of Economic Development, to see what else we can do. We have another meeting set up on Thursday, the 12th, at 4:00 PM to regroup. That's all I have for you this afternoon. Thank you.
Wonderful. Rex, let's see if council has any questions for you. So I'm going to run through everybody's name just to make sure. Jay, any questions?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, thanks Rex for being here. And I think it's great that you're doing some outreach towards the businesses. We certainly can use that support. I wanted to ask you a question, not to put you on the spot at all, but I'm, we have a meeting on Monday with the Douglas County Youth Initiative, and we're trying to solicit some feedback from students like yourself, and the Lone Tree Youth Commission in general, in terms of what kind of resources do you think that we as a county can provide to you that you're not receiving currently? And just what is it that's going on with you all that we can kind of help out with during this crazy time of COVID?
So I think the biggest thing that we discussed in our meeting that we could get from you guys is using the next door, the city next door, to post our surveys, just so we could spread the word a little bit more. I'm not totally sure what else, but if you guys have any ideas that could help us out, that'd be great, too.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. And if you, if you think of something that pops up between now and Monday, please let me know. You know how to reach me, because we just want to be able to make sure that we do have a voice for, for Lone Tree Youth Commission, and how we can ever provide services across the county and here locally in the city as well. Because we appreciate all you're doing. We realize you're all going through a lot right now, and we just want to position ourselves to best help you. So, thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Rex, did you say you have a meeting this Thursday?
So next Thursday on the 12th.
Next Thursday, it's after. Well, because I think, I think Councilmember Carpenter would love to understand, not just with the work that the youth commission is doing, but understand from you and your peers, if there's something that the county, Douglas County Youth Initiative initiative could be doing for the teens and youth in our community. So are there, is there something the county could be doing to help you guys through this time period? We talk a lot about services for businesses and how to help with school resources, but I think, Jay, is that, is that pretty accurate? You're looking for a little bit more broader. What is the youth of Douglas County think could help them during this time right now?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Because we're talking about expanded mental health resources. We're just trying to think out of the box and just be as present to you all as we can to make a difference in the future. So if you could brainstorm with the rest of the commission, I realize it's somewhat of a tight, but it gives you a week to kind of process some things and reach out to me, because I'd love to, to make your voices heard amongst the Douglas County Youth Initiative and all of our partners in the county.
And Jay, let me suggest, we ask Leanna, Leanna to send something out, and Austin to send, actually, an email out to all of them, and maybe you could work with them to do that. And Rex, you could let everybody know that that is coming, that we would love to learn a little bit more about what, what can be done to support the youth during this pretty miserable time, right? Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. Yeah, Leanna or staff or Austin follow up on that for sure.
Great, great. Thanks, Jay. Mike, do you have anything? You're muted, Mike. I'm not sure if you're talking. Other, you're muted.
Hey Rex, I'm unmuted now, so you can hear me. Thank you very much for what you're doing with the commission and reaching out to Lone Tree businesses. They certainly need help, and hopefully you can learn some things from that and maybe find some ways to pitch in and help our businesses. And I just had a broad sort of a question on your survey with the youth. Do you have a target? Are there specific areas that you're going to be asking about in terms of the COVID virus and response to it, or is this a very broad focus sort of thing where you're just open for learning and not sure of where you're going to take it at this point in time?
So yeah, so we're, 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 we're still trying to figure out where to go, because there's a lot of ways we could do it. And so we kind of debated a good amount on like, how we should ask the questions, and if we should get like, specific subgroups, so we could focus more in on like, exactly what to do. But we came to the conclusion that it'd be the best idea if we just had it like, a big, broad, like, they could just answer in a long paragraph, and we could just kind of single it out and see what Lone Tree needs the most after a good amount of analysis.
Thank you.
Hey, Wynne, how about you? Anything for Rex?
Only a thank you for thinking of the educators and the businesses and offering your help. I think that's, that goes a long way these days. So thank you for that.
Okay, and last but never least is Kath. Kathy, anything?
Thanks, Jackie. No, just, good to see you, Rex, and I really appreciate you coming to speak with us today.
Yeah, thank you.
And I want to echo the gratitude of council, Rex. We really appreciate you and the youth commission. Extend our thanks to them. And one of the things I'd like you guys to think about a little bit, too, is how you think we could message to the youth in the community about slowing the spread of COVID. You know, is that, you know, it's, it is a challenge for all of us, and we'd love your creative brains thinking about that, too. Okay?
Gotcha.
All right. Thanks again for being here tonight, and good luck with the rest of the semester. All right. Good. Take care. All right, moving on, we're going to talk next about a proposed vacant property registration, and Julius is going to lead us in that conversation. This is a very interesting proposal. I'm looking forward to hearing it. So Julius, you ready to go?
I am ready.
Wonderful.
And it's, it's great to see you this evening virtually. Slide, please. So with regard to the ordinance proposal, we're going to talk to you about tonight, it relates to vacant structures which are inevitable. Businesses come and go, as do residents. It's not unlawful to own a vacant property, yet it can become a public nuisance when that vacant building and grounds aren't adequately maintained. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide, please. So, the ordinance isn't intended for single vacancies in multi-tenant structures. That would be, an example of that would be Sweet Tomatoes. They're located in a multi-tenant facility where there is ongoing property maintenance. The ordinance isn't intended for Pier 1 imports. They're, again, located in a multi-tenant structure for which maintenance is being performed. The ordinance is not intended for construction sites or vacant lots. The proposed ordinance is intended for entirely vacant buildings. An example of that would be Miyama, the Japanese steakhouse that closed down the street from the municipal building. Another example of an entirely vacant structure would be the Los Arcos property, former Los Arcos restaurant. Entirely vacant buildings often have a lot of problems associated with them. We have a high incidence of illegal dumping that occurs at the vacant properties. We have illegal camping, loitering, litter, a general lack of maintenance, and frequent vandalism. So problem vacant properties in Lone Tree today include Sears, Trio, Forstrom Building, Miyama, Los Arcos, Taco Bell, Country Buffet. We even have one residence on Green Island Circle that's been vacant and held by a bank tied up in litigation for about three years now. Our current approach has been a reactive approach. When there's a problem at the property, code enforcement responds. We reach out and try to get that resolved. But with the proposed vacant property registration, what we want to do is incentivize good behavior. We want to have a fee attached to the vacant property registration, and perhaps a 50% reduction in the annual fee, provided that the property owner enters into a no trespass agreement with Lone Tree Police Department, posts no trespass signs on the property, has no property maintenance violations for a year, and provides a registered contact person. So again, we want to incentivize good behavior.
Hey Julius, it's, it's the mayor. You know what? I think our, at least online, our slides are very behind your presentation. So could we catch up?
Because this- We're working, we're working on that, Mayor.
Okay.
We're not sure why that's happening. We're going to ask Jay to unshare and reshare and see if that helps us get back on track.
Okay.
Sure, hang on one second.
Julius, just so you know, we're not caught, we're, we are not caught up to you, but, but please go ahead. I just wanted to see if we could fix that. Go ahead, Julius, please.
All right. So, you know, the, the next steps on the vacant property registration program would be to seek council feedback, and we've continued to work with the city attorney in the hopes that we could finalize a draft ordinance and have it adopted and in place for the new year. And again, vacant buildings often have a lot of problems associated with them. So, do you have any questions or comments with regard to this ordinance proposal?
And council, would it be better, do you want us to flip through the slides one more time, just so you can kind of see the, all the slides one more time, since I, we don't know who saw what? As Julius was doing that?
Be helpful, just to do a quick run through.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead. Go ahead. Let's-
Yeah, I can back it up.
Okay, I think we're good from there. I think we got this part. We got this one.
Sure. Okay. So, you know, one of the things that we've kicked around on a staff level is, what should the annual fee be? Perhaps $1,000. And should a portion of that fee be waived, perhaps $500 each year, if that vacant property is well-maintained, and they've entered into that agreement, that no trespass agreement with the Lone Tree Police Department? And they posted the property for no trespass, et cetera. So do you want, do you want me to go through the presentation again, or?
No, no, no. We're, I think, I think this, we're looking at the property maintenance code clarification right here. Is there a slide after this one?
There is.
Okay, let's see the next one.
We also wanted to, we wanted to also talk to you about additional opportunities to enhance the Lone Tree Municipal Code.
Okay.
And that-
Julius, do you want us to give you some feedback on, on, okay, why don't we give you some feedback on this potential, on the, on the potential property registration before we move on to that? So I am, again, going to go through by name, everybody, just to make sure we all have our voices heard this way. So Wynne, why don't I start with you? Do you have any questions, comments, thoughts about any, about a proposed vacant property registration?
Sure. I, I think it is a good idea. I would almost, I was just trying to figure out how we might be able to, rather than reduce a fee for the second year, maybe rebate it at the end of the year, or the end of the vacant status, if they've maintained or continued to upkeep the property. It, it just seems to me that sometimes, you know, if you, if you just cut the fee, that there is a possibility that towards the end of the time period, they may let up a little bit of their, their maintenance.
Sure.
So just to clarify, Wynne, instead of, so kind of rebating it at the end of the year, should they maintain the property? And rebate all of it, or a portion of it?
I would say a fairly good portion of it. I might, if it's a $1,000 fee, and they've done everything and kept it up, and worked with the LTPD, that perhaps at the end of the year, you know, 500 or 750 come back to the, the person. So it's almost like a, more like a security deposit than a, you know, maybe 250 is the fee, and the rest is refundable.
Yep, yep.
Understood.
Okay. Mike, do you have any comments, thoughts? All right, what are you, good idea? Not sure about the idea?
I think it's a good idea. Clarification, Julius. Without an ordinance, what is our ability to have vacant lot owners do what we'd like them to do in terms of keeping the property up? What, what's, what's your process without ordinance?
You know, that's, that's a great question. There, there is no ordinance requirement for the property owner to enter into that agreement with the Lone Tree Police Department. In addition, in, in addition to that, there is no legal requirement that they post the property for no trespass. So those are two issues that we're trying to address with the registration making it mandatory. And then with regard to the maintenance on the property, we're, we're going in after the fact, after there's a, a problem there, and, and requiring them through the property maintenance elements of the zoning code, or the nuisance abatement code to maintain it. Does that answer your question?
Okay, thank you.
So Mike, are you comfortable with Wynne's suggestion of kind of having a rebate at the end of the year, or when the property get, Julius, it wasn't clear to me. Can you clarify whether or not this would be an annual fee, or would, that, and then we would, could rebate at the end of the year, or is this a one-time fee until the property is leased again? What was staff's recommendation there?
Our, our recommendation is that it be an annual fee, and we're incentivizing good behavior with that fee discount.
Okay, or rebate. Mike, does that sound reasonable to you? Okay, great.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable.
Okay, wonderful. Jay, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it, for sure. I want them to have some skin in the game, certainly some incentive to remain compliant. One concern, though, and I like the idea of collecting it on the front end and then rebating on the back end, but I'm wondering if some of these property owners, and Julius, you might know the answer to this, how responsive are they anyway? Do they have, are there multiple liens against the properties anyway? Are they not even caring about a $1,000 fine because they're sitting on $250,000 of, of owed, you know, entitlements outside of that? I don't know. Is, what are your thoughts on that in terms of, of enforcement and being able to collect on that $1,000?
It's been, it's been our experience that the owners of vacant properties are very adverse to additional penalties and fines. So the cash incentive really does help.
Okay. And assuming we can get that, collect, get them to, that we're able to collect the cash initially upfront, that's only, my only concern is how responsive they would be to that request. But I'll put that in your court. But conceptually, I like the idea, for sure.
And Julian, would there be a potential lien on the property? Should they not? Or maybe, maybe we'll ask our city attorney, could, if she's ready to answer that, or at least could back to council on understanding. I think Councilmember Carpenter raises a good point. If they don't submit, if they don't register the property per our, our ordinance, what consequences do we have? And again, you, yeah, is that our city attorney?
It's, it's hard to jump in here, but those are all excellent questions. The way we've framed it now is that for any violations, which would include not registering, we would, you know, cite them into municipal court, and, and then any unpaid fines and, you know, registration fees could be imposed as a lien on the property, sort of like other nuisance abatement procedures that we already incorporate into the code. The vacant property registration is an obligation on the vacant property owner. However, in the ordinance we have proposed, the city manager or his or her designee could also find that a property is vacant based on certain conditions, in which case we would send a notice of vacant property registration to the owner, and then the owner would have the right to appeal that administrative determination. And if there's no appeal, then that property is also put on the list. So there are two ways in which they can get on the vacant property registration list, and then they're obligated. And again, it's, I guess it would be a little difficult to get blood from a turnip if, you know, they've got liens on the property and they're not being responsive. But the, the hope is that they would pay the registration fee, and if not, that we would cite them as a municipal code violation.
So I do think that makes sense to me. One of the things I think council would be interested in understanding, and I want to make sure we hear from Mayor Protem as well as, but what, that definition of vacant, what constitutes vacant, and, you know, how long would the property be without a tenant or, you know, operating business? What, what's the threshold, the timing threshold in addition to the definition of vacant, I guess? So I don't expect answers on that. Just, that's what I would like, to see other information. And let's go to Kathy. Kath, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I think I had two questions as well. Both have been answered already. So as long as we're clear on what constitutes vacant, because we do have a tremendous amount of change, right? That's just natural, and it's going to happen, and making sure that it doesn't become administratively difficult for us because of, you know, too short of a time in which that becomes a vacant property. So as long as staff can manage that piece and feel like that's well documented, then I'm good with what we have.
Great. And I appreciate all the thoughtful comments. I think the only thing, the only thing that I might add is understanding the rebate process, so we're really clear on what that might look like, and also the basis of the fee. And I know, the basis of the rebate amount, I guess is a better way to say it. I think these vacant properties do create obligations for the city to, you know, make sure that they are not being vandalized, that there aren't people breaking in, that there isn't. So I know we have, as a city, have to go out and do some oversight on these facilities. So there's amount, an amount that costs us. So trying to, so I would like the city to be able to recoup our cost, but rebate as much back as we possibly can, because I think I completely agree with the idea of incentivizing the good behavior. And the other thing I'd like to just understand in the ordinance, and I tried to jot it down, is that it would be, the rebate would occur if there was no trespassing, it was posted as no trespassing, and that they've signed a no trespass, and I'm not sure what the right word is, but a document that allows our police to go in and issue trespass, whatever that is. So I want to understand the reasons, that what they have beside no graffiti, or, or make sure the graffiti is cleaned up within, I mean, they can't control if some kid comes in and sprays it, but if, as long as it's cleaned up within a 48-hour period, or, or we give it over to staff to give them an extension, should that be, should that be, should that make sense, I guess, or be fair? So I guess, really understanding the conditions under which they'll get that rebate money back. That's what I'd like to see next time it comes before us. Anything else?
One of the great things also about the ordinance is that it's a way for us to proactively contact that new owner of a vacant property, and let them know what the city's expectations are, and let them know what the consequences are of not maintaining it.
Oh, that, that's great, Julius. You made me think of another thing. Is, is there anybody else in that area that has something similar to this? And what if a property never gets occupied, right? So that would be a vacant property as well? I mean, and how long do they, so, for example, there are brand-new buildings that are waiting to be leased. I don't know. I might like to give a brand-new construct, building a brand-new construction a bit of a grace period, too. I'd like council to think, not council, I'd like staff to think about that, if it's brand-new construction.
Yeah, we, we'd want the property to have a certificate of occupancy for one year, and after one year, if it's vacant, or if it's been a perpetual construction site, we also would consider that.
Okay. And then I'd like to understand what those, I think those are very good, love where you're going with the Julius, but I want it written down and understand, so it's very clear to folks.
Sure.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else for this. We'll look forward to seeing what you come back with. So let's move on now to the property maintenance. Did you, do you want to quickly run through that?
There's two additional code opportunities for us, a way to expand our toolkit to be a little more effective. One is on the section 162210, property maintenance, to specifically add that all elements of the property shall remain free of trash, debris, litter, and graffiti. That would just be a one-sentence addition to the code. In addition to that, we also would like to add a one-paragraph section of the code related specifically to trash enclosures, stating that trash enclosures have to be maintained in a state of good repair with operable enclosure doors. All access into the trash enclosure must be comprised of a metal gate system that is closed at all times except during trash collection. And all trash and debris placed in the trash enclosure must be located off the ground and placed in metal dumpsters. Trash containers or dumpsters must be in a good state of repair with operable lids, and the container lids must be kept closed to prevent litter. These are just two minor text amendments we're proposing for the zoning code.
Okay, great. Let's get quick reaction to that. Let's start with Kathy. Kathy, you're muted if you're talking. There you go.
I was on mute. I think I'm good with that. I'm having trouble, like, yeah, I think I'm okay with the way it's presented.
Okay. I think, I think it's hard without looking at it. We'll leave it up, Kath, if, as we're, as you're looking at it and others are commenting, feel free to let me know at the end you want to make a comment. Jay, what are you, what are your thoughts about the code clarifications?
No, I think it makes sense. I've always noticed some of them around town that just looking, are not aesthetically pleasing. So I think it makes sense. I just don't know what exactly, when we say, what that could look like potentially, but I'm, I'm fine with letting staff run with that. But I like the idea and the concept overall.
When you say, what would that look like? Do you mean what the consequence would be to the property owner if they?
The, the metal gate system, I don't know what that, that all looks like or how that is structured.
Okay. So I think it's just two gates that shut, you know, you can open and close them in the front of the.
Some, some other kind of, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I think it's just like opening, open and closed at the front of the enclosure, where you slide the dumpster in and out of.
Yep. That makes total sense. Okay, I was unclear about that, but yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, great. Mike, what are you thinking? And you're muted.
Yeah, I, I understand our concern with wanting the trash enclosures to look as well as they can. I'd come back to Jay's point earlier in terms of, you know, if you've got a vacant building, the owner's not using it, he's under pressure from liens. I'm not, I mean, the intent seems good. I'm not sure on the practicality of why there's even trash, and what kind of priority a vacant building owner would put on taking care of it. I can understand us wanting them to do it, but I'm not sure it's high on their priorities.
I don't want to cut you off. This is for all of our commercial properties, not ju, this wouldn't, this, this code clarification would apply to our, to all of our non-residential, not just vacant. So that's, that's these last two pieces.
Okay, well, that's fine. Yeah, we want trash enclosures to look as good as they can. They are trash.
Yeah. We like pretty trash. No. Okay. All right, you're good. All right, Wynne, are you okay with the code clarifications?
Yeah, I think so. I think that, that kind of sums up what's needed. And kind of to myx point, I would expect that in a vacant building, there would be no trash.
They're not paying for trash.
Right, exactly. So.
Well, there's no dumpsters anyway.
Exactly. So.
Okay. Well, you're good. All right. So Julius, I think council's comfortable with the code clarification language, and we look forward to seeing the potential language associated with any potential proposed vacant property registration, okay?
Thanks very much. Have a great evening.
All right, thanks. Thanks for your time tonight. All right, moving on. Exo Energy's Partners in Energy Program, and Justin Russell is going to present this this evening. And I want to just give a little shout out to the staff for exploring this and bringing this to us tonight. So Justin, you ready to go?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the Sustainability Committee, and also a program that we are recommending the city pursue. So the Sustainability Committee is working towards creating and maintaining a healthy, safe, livable community for today and future generations. And it's something that the city has been focused on since its first incorporated. Sustainability is evident in how we grow, how we do business, and the culture of our community. The Lone Tree Sustainable Action Plan is to contribute, is to continue to integrate sustainability into the city's overarching plans, policies, and day-to-day functions as an organization. And at the bottom of this slide, you'll see a website. So the committee over the last couple of months has generated this new website to show projects we're working on, success stories that we've had, and also is a great resource for the community. Next slide. So the Sustainability Committee is made up of various staff members from various departments. We have Kelly, Alex, and Julius, who represent the Community Development Department, Abby and myself, who represent Public Works, Chris Cooper, who represents the Police Department, Paul and Bailey, who represent the Art Center, and Leanna, who represents Municipal Court. So as you all know, Lone Tree is the premier Colorado community connected by great neighborhoods, vibrant public spaces, and beautiful natural environment and thriving businesses. The Exo Partners in Energy Program would complement all elements of Lone Tree's vision. An overview of the program. It develops a better understanding of the energy needs for the communities Exo serves. Exo will do evaluation based on our priorities and goals. Residents, public facilities, and business owners access the benefits of the energy-saving programs. It also strengthens the relationship within the community and supports the Exo Energy philosophy of community engagement. So some benefits to the program. It's approximately two years, a two-year program with support from Exo Energy throughout the entire process. They help with implementation, data tracking. They give us a lot of Exo resources, and also help us facilitating our goals. The deliverable to this program is a complete energy action plan document. Also, Lone Tree would be part of a network of other city participation, participants that have already gone through this process or in the midst of doing so. The costs would mainly be staff costs, time, and effort. Staff would be used for developing an energy action plan, implementing that plan, and also organizing events and data tracking. Exo pays for societal costs, such as, as part of a stipend in the program. For example, promotional t-shirts and pamphlets that we use during our events. Additional costs that may arise depending on goals created. For example, at the end of this program, if we wanted, we decide one of our priorities is to transition so many of our fleet vehicles over to electric through this program, unfortunately, Exo won't pay for that. Next slide. So the community engagement process, Exo provides facilitators to help engage community members in each step of the process. Previous goals from other cities have included adding renewable energy, reducing natural gas consumption, and developing an action plan. Involves various community stakeholders, council members, community residents, commercial facilities and businesses, and large facilities like Charles Swab and South Suburban Parks and Rec. So the City of Lone Tree partnership with Exo, the plans are unique to each city's population, economy, and decided points of focus. Neighboring cities like Centennial have recently produced energy action plans with great success. Planning process influences implementation process. In the application stage, no detailed decision is made on what this partnership will result in. That being said, that those goals and priorities are developed within the six, for six months when we start meeting with Exo. Exo walks Lone Tree and stakeholders through each step, offering resources along the way. So the application, admission isn't guaranteed into the program. Applications for the next cohort are due January 15th. Applications do require time and multi-department collaboration. So within the application, they want to know what is our pressing, most pressing energy-related issue that our city is facing today, as well as if we're involved in any other programs. And also, what, what's our process of getting something like this approved and started So the Sustainability Committee recommends that the city apply by the January 15th deadline for participation into the program. We would find out with the first quarter of 2021 if any, if we were accepted into the program. So at that time, that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions or comments.
Wonderful. Thank, thank you very much. And please extend our thanks to the other Lone Tree staff members who are participating on the Sustainability Committee. So we're going to start off this time with Mike. Mike, what are your thoughts?
You know, I appreciate the effort, and I'm all for sustainability. I like where we are as a city in terms of our commitment to energy conservation through our comp plan and through the downstream plans that come out of that. You know, and we've, we've done a lot already in terms of moving things forward. I'm a little concerned about timing, in terms of when we would move this effort forward. I'd like to understand, Justin, why is now the right time to do this in terms of surveying our residents and, and moving this forward at, at this point in time? And we're faced with a budget next year, where we're in, you know, hold on to where you are and hope things get better, and then we might open some things up. We've got COVID virus in front of us. We had some election issues possibly next year. I'm just a little concerned about timing. What thoughts do you have on why, what's the urgency? Why do this now?
My thoughts on that are, this program came to us and was presented to us about two months ago, and we sort of ran with it and thought it was a good opportunity. There are different cohorts. They do one in July and January. So if timing isn't, isn't, isn't the right timing, we always can look at a different time of the year or, or down the road.
So Mike, assuming the timing issue is addressed, and perhaps our city manager might want to weigh in on that as well. Are you, since this is the application, there's two, two application periods a year, is it something you're interested in exploring, assuming we have the staff resources and budget to handle it?
Well, you know, we'll get by the timing issue in terms of, we all think this is important to move at this point in time. Then there are questions that have to do with funding. And more broadly, you know, how, how well positioned are we to move forward independently? Is this something that we ought to take some time in terms of exploring with the county and making sure that there are resources, either at the state or county level, to fund the ideas that may come out of this? I have a little bit of concern with creating expectations by surveying our residents and then not having the resources available to move forward in a timely manner. But I have concerns with timing. I have concerns with, are there resources out there to tap into for, for grants? Or do we need to work with the county to build something up? But, you know, I just, I have a lot of questions about this at this point in time, and I'm, I'm all for engaging our employees and moving sustainability forward. I'm, I'm just a little uncomfortable.
Got it. Okay. Wynne, what are your thoughts?
So I, I, I like the concept of it. I, I still feel like I'm, I don't understand it enough to, to actually see what kind of outcomes the partnership with Exo would bring, unless maybe they, they're bringing some expertise on how to make the plan and, and that kind of thing. So that, that may be just a, an understanding gap on my part. I also wanted to make sure that whatever committee we, name we choose, we make sure to differentiate ourselves, the city's sustainable, sustainability committee, from the citizen group that kind of carries the same name. So there, there wouldn't be any confusion about what, you know, who, who's who.
Okay, great. Jay, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, as you know, I'm all for sustainability. One question for you, Justin, I'm just trying to get my, wrap my, my brain around this. So are we intentionally, or are we in a partnership with Exo going to go to major employers or Park Meadows Mall, et cetera, on ways to become more LEED-certified and energy-efficient? Or is Exo with us going to be practically reaching out, looking into solar opportunities? Or I'm just trying to get a better grasp of exactly what the, the end result is?
Pretty much, from what they explained to us, everything's on the table. So once we start the process with them, we take, we build priorities of what the city wants to do for LEED certifications, or what we want to offer to our residents and our business community, and then we run from, from that point forward. So the first six months of this program is just mainly generating our priorities and how we want to push it out to the public. So pretty much anything's on the table of how we want to bring this to the community and to our businesses.
Okay. So, so it is for residents as well as?
Yes.
Businesses in the city? Okay, okay.
Mayor, this is Kelly first. Can I, is it appropriate for me to hop in?
Sure. Yes, Kelly, go ahead.
Just to kind of build on what Justin has been saying and maybe address a little bit of the comments that have come forward. I just want to reiterate, I mean, this process would not have any upfront costs by the city other than staff time. Exo Energy, I think you can think of them as kind of a free consultant in this process to us. They're bringing the resources, they're bringing the expertise. And it really, from my understanding, is very much a city-driven scope. So, you know, you know, your point about sort of creating expectations, Commissioner Anderson's very well taken. But I think that we would keep that kind of thing in mind as we started to build this program and work with Exo on kinds of, you know, what are the questions we want to be asking? You know, where's the focus? We might want to take this. Where might we not want to take this? So I, I think you just want to keep in mind that this is definitely something that we, the city would have control over. We can come back to the city council, of course, you know, before and at every step that we would take. The other real quick thing I would just add is in terms of timing and kind of why now. If we were to want to focus on assisting businesses, that is one of the things that we could do, which might be a really opportune time to, to assist in terms of energy savings and being able to help our businesses actually save money through different measures.
Thanks, thanks. Thank you, Kelly. I think that provides a little more clarity. And also, you know, reviewing the Partners in Energy frequently asked questions that was in the packet, I think does speak to some of that as well. Let me, let me touch base with Kathy. I don't think she's had an opportunity to weigh in yet. Kathy?
Yeah, two things. First, it would be helpful to understand what other folks have seen as kind of outcomes of this. I don't know if that was in the packet or not, I didn't see that. But having that kind of background, I think would be helpful. To Wynne's point, just kind of getting, wrapping our heads around what we might be able to offer is awesome. And secondly, I think now's a great time, frankly, that, given kind of the situation folks find themselves in, giving something new to work on, that would be kind of in this realm of what they could bring to bear could be really helpful. So I'm definitely in favor of us moving forward quicker rather than later.
Great, thanks, Kathy. And it looks like from the attachments that were included in the packet, there is a fair amount of support provided from Exo as far as creating the plan. Is that a fair statement, Kelly, or, or Justin?
Yes, it is. They, they offer a tremendous amount of support through the whole process, from planning all the way to pushing our events and implementing our goals and priorities.
Great. And I do think this is an opportunity for us to provide some energy savings, dollar savings to our businesses, particularly in light of, as, as Mike pointed out so well, our budget is tight and their budgets are tight. And so if there are opportunities to provide savings, as long as we recognize going into it, that, that we will have to find partners to help pay for some of the costs. But it does seem like it is also a priority for our residents and our businesses. So I am comfortable submitting the application and, and moving forward to develop the plan. And I think we can't really know what we, we might achieve unless we try and unless we put the plan together, right? So I think the action plan will be a guiding document for us as to how we, how we move within the next year. And I am very anxious to see what our energy action plan could be. So given those reservations expressed, I think we always want to make sure that, that staff time, staff does have the time to adequately work with Exo, recognizing they are going to be a strong partner. And I think I read it would be up to 100 And I think I read it would be up to 100 hours from a staff person, or it says it may require up to 100 hours of time from the kind of local lead. Do you guys know if that's one individual or is that, are you thinking collectively the Sustainability Committee will spend 100, the city employee Sustainability Committee will spend 100 hours on that? Do you know?
I'll take that one. I think it'll be split. I mean, Justin would work 100 hours a week if we let him, but we're gonna, that'll be split up among that group that you saw. The other thing, actually, as far as the timing goes, actually, this slide actually gives me some inspiration because it shows the, what was the first all solar powered neighborhood, I think in Colorado, the first one that was done where every single house had solar. As we're looking at new houses coming out of the ground, hopefully next year, you know, one of the things I'm going to ask this team to really look at is how we can have Excel incentivize that kind of residential, you know, residential and commercial. We've got some multifamily stuff coming as well. The second thing I would say about timing is I'm betting on federal stimulus next year. And last time we saw a major federal stimulus, there was a lot of it that went towards sustainability projects. And so to the extent that we can have some lined up as quickly as possible, I think we might be better beneficiaries of that.
Thanks, Seth. I think that does speak to being very well positioned to potentially take advantage. And also, as we look to the development of the East Side, we want to make sure we're doing everything to the best possible standard that we can. And there may be opportunities there that are identified through the process. So Mike, I know, given your, I think legitimate reservations, but are you, I think we're, I'm getting head nods from the rest of council on it moving forward. Is there, are you okay with submitting the application and learning a little bit more about the process, given what you've heard from staff?
You know, if somehow we can make this work for us and work for our businesses as they're trying to recover and get back to full strength, I think it's, you know, it's a good opportunity. I hope it doesn't compete for other priorities that we should be working on if the implementability of the plan isn't really timely once we get done. So that's, I am proud of putting the plan together. I think it's an opportunity for our businesses. I'm a little concerned about the end products and the timing of them, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah, okay. I think that with those caveats, Justin, thank you for your presentation tonight. And I have to say, I have heard how hard you have been working through this COVID response. We don't get you in front of us all the time and I don't want to let you leave without letting you know how much council appreciates you going above and beyond. I'm not in the office as frequently, but when I am there, I see you working very hard, keeping the facility as clean as possible. And I know the city manager has let us know about you going above and beyond. So thank you for that good work for the community and we look forward to hearing more about this Partners in Energy. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, moving on. Proposed 2021 city fee schedule, and this is going to be Jay Robb and Kelly First. Jay, are you going to go first?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Thank you and members of council. I'll just be explaining three administrative fees that we're recommending for the 2021 fee schedule related to liquor licensing, municipal court, and the cleaning and rental fee for the Civic Center. And then Kelly will take it over for an explanation of some recommended planning fee changes for next year. And we're just here to receive comments and feedback from council. And then you will see a final fee schedule presented to you in December. And the idea is that the 2021 fees will go into effect starting January 1 of 2021. So when we talk about fees, we like to remind our council and our customers and our residents that municipalities do have the right to charge for the cost of services and to remit the costs of granting any administrative permits. I already summarized the timeline and the topics for tonight. So I'll just jump into the first one, which is a liquor licensing fee that came to our attention recently. And this fee revolves around a late application fee when a liquor license lapses beyond their expiration date. And when a liquor license is issued, let's say November 3, that date is for always, it will always be the annual renewal date. And staff is constantly reminding our liquor license applicants about their renewal date, you know, 60 to 90 days in advance. And so we try to make sure that we've received renewal applications by their expiration date or that we're aware of the liquor license applicant, you know, does intend to renew every single year. If the license does go past the expiration date and we have not heard an intent for the license holder to renew, the state actually allows for a $500 late fee from the expiration date to 90 days late. And if they go beyond the 90 days, there is a different term for the same $500 fee. It's called a reissue fee. And that can be applied between 90 and 180 days beyond the expiration date. In addition to, state statutes allow for $25 penalty per day past 90 days. Anything beyond 180 days, the liquor license cannot be renewed. It will automatically expire. And I should also contribute that this process is kind of at the discretion of the organization. If we choose to work with an applicant that has decided to renew past their expiration date, then we can go ahead and do that. It happened recently to one of our liquor license holders and it was brought to our attention that we actually don't have the $500 late fee or the reissue fee in place. And so even though the state charged one of our liquor license holders, it's not in our fee schedule. So we couldn't even levy the fee even if we wanted to. And at this time, I don't think we would even consider it, you know, but we are recommending it to be on the fee schedule in a post-COVID environment. And I will stop there for any questions or we can move on.
Okay, Jay, so just to clarify, the staff recommendation is not to, it would be to suspend these during COVID?
Yeah.
Is that what you just said?
Mm-hmm. I don't, we're not going after any of our liquor license holders. I've never had to levy this fee. It's more of like a carrot and stick philosophy where we have it on the fee schedule as a warning and we're constantly working with our liquor license holders to get their paperwork filed for their renewal each and every year.
Okay, all right. Does anybody on council have a specific question regarding this one for Jay?
No.
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 Okay. Keep going.
Thank you. The second one I'm presenting tonight is for the administrative cost of sealing municipal court records related to convictions and adult cases that have been dismissed. These are also attached to state law, which establishes a $65 processing fee to seal adult cases that have been dismissed. And state law also requires a filing fee for defendants who submit a petition to seal conviction records. And there's some administrative, there is an administrative burden attached to that with the filing, the processing, and possibly even a hearing with the municipal prosecutor and the municipal judge. The state judicial branch has already established a cost for filing a petition to seal court convictions, and that is for $224. And this amount is also recommended by our court staff and our municipal judge. So that's just a brief explanation of these two court sealing fees. These went into effect last year and they're becoming more common. We're seeing a slow increase month to month for these, and so we wanted to get it on the fee schedule for next year. Are there any questions related to these?
Does a council member have a question on this?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Win.
So does this, I guess my question is, is if a case is dismissed because the defendant was, you know, the wrong person or something like that, wouldn't that automatically be sealed or destroyed or whatever? I mean, if, I guess I'm trying to, you know, if it's the request of the defendant, if something was dismissed because there was a technicality or blah, 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 and they asked to have it dismissed, I understand that, you know, the fees should be borne by them, but I would hate to see someone wrongfully prosecuted and during the process, it's determined that someone else is really the perpetrator and then the case is dismissed and then that defendant would have to pay these fees. It's just...
Are these fees applicable? Yeah, are these fees applicable to dismissed cases?
Yes, because a dismissed case is still on someone's record, kind of in the scenario that council member, when Shaw was describing, you would possibly have like a future employer pull up your record and see that there may have been a conviction that was dismissed, but they would still see that unless the dismissed case had been sealed.
If it's dismissed before conviction, if there isn't a conviction, then, I'm not familiar with this process, guys, sorry. If there isn't a conviction, if during the course of the investigation it's dismissed or during the trial it's dismissed, to Win's point, they realize they've got the wrong person, does that go on the record?
It's my understanding that that would still be on someone's record. It would be a record of a dismissed conviction.
Okay.
Unless you filed to have it sealed.
Okay. Okay. So the scenario Win described potentially could happen.
Yes, it could.
Got it. All right. Any other questions about this? Okay. Next one, Jay?
You remember seeing the proposal to impose cleaning and rental fees for the Civic Center? We presented it to you at the October 2 study session. We're just bringing it back as a reminder. We're recommending the two fees shown below as a cleaning and rental fee during these COVID times that would be charged when groups use the Civic Center, outside groups, I should say, and that includes metropolitan districts, HOAs, local clubs and civic groups. City meetings, like the city council, planning commission and other groups affiliated with the city would not be charged the cleaning and rental fee for the Civic Center. Yep. And then we would reconsider these and reevaluate them kind of after the dust settles in a post-COVID world, but that's our recommendation for now for going into 2021.
Great. And if I recall correctly, these fees were based on what it actually costs us to get that room clean and ready for use for somebody else. So I think, council, any thoughts, questions on these? Nope. I'm seeing no on there. Okay. Okay, thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Council.
Okay, so moving on, I think Kelly's going to get into the planning fee, potential schedule changes. Kelly, you ready?
Yes, thank you. So we are proposing more of a comprehensive wholesale change to the planning division fees within the fee schedule currently. And the main driver of this is to make sure that we are aligning our fees with development, excuse me, processes that are in our subdivision and zoning codes. You know, we've done a code update recently to our subdivision, so we definitely want to make sure we're covering all application types. That's one of the reasons. Also, we definitely want to make sure that we are, as Jay said, covering costs of city staff review time with these applications. So we want to better align the fees with what we believe are the actual costs incurred, not only for planning staff, but for legal staff as well. We want to improve the transparency and public understanding of the fees and ultimately reduce administrative discretion that currently exists within some areas of our fee schedule. Next slide. So, you know, I won't go through every single change because we have done, like I said, a wholesale recommended change to these. However, just in summary, some of the high points are that we are now including or recommending to include the estimated city attorney legal fees as may be applicable within each of the fees as a base fee. So we've obviously consulted very closely with Linda on what those would be and included those right into the fee. You'll also see that we've done kind of an itemization of various administrative costs that are associated with projects like recordation fees, mailing fees, public notice, publication fees, and so on. Sometimes these are pass-through fees, sometimes they've been things that we have absorbed in the past, but are very, you know, customarily charged back to applicants in other areas. And then we do have some new fees for processes that are already in the code, but we didn't previously charge or absorbed into fees. So for example, when it comes to SIPs, there might be changes that take place after a project is approved in the field. So we have to go out and evaluate what an applicant wants to do or already has done, which takes staff time and maybe some amended plans and things like that. We just didn't have a fee to cover things like that. So that's one example. Next slide. And then some of the categories on which we are proposing there be fee adjustments are listed here. And I'd be happy to go into any of these that you might have questions on. I think it's safe to say that we are recommending increases to these various fees in almost all cases, I think in all cases. Some are relatively nominal, others are more significant. And I think one of the best ways to kind of explain this is to show in the next slide some actual examples of what this would mean. So next slide. And these are outlined a little bit more closely in your staff report also, but I'm happy to explain them in further detail. But what we did was we took some project examples of things that we have done recently and compared what the current fee is versus what we're proposing. So for in that first line, Prescient Apartments, for example, the apartments that are approved near the Sky Ridge Station, not yet built, we charged $3,200 for that SIP. And I should say, the SIP fee has been $3,200 since I started with the city. So that gives you an idea of how long we have charged, you know, that fee. So we are proposing under that scenario that the, you know, it's of a certain acreage, I think it's under five acres. So we would propose that that would be charged $7,500 again, to better align with our costs. What we're proposing to do with SIPs is break them out into the two different acreage categories so that we can better try to estimate what the costs are going to be based on, you know, a reasonable assumption that, you know, smaller projects are generally more straightforward, larger projects, like the second one I have listed here, like a Kiwan project, has multiple buildings, they might have variances associated with them and other restrictions like that. So we have built that into the proposed fee in those cases of $10,500. I've listed here what would be a hypothetical preliminary plan for a single-family detached neighborhood, let's say it's 150 acres. Under our current fee schedule... Under our current fee schedule, the, the fee, regardless of the size of a preliminary plan, is only $1,000. And what we're proposing for a project of this size would be a $24,000 fee. And here again, what we're doing to try to be more transparent and more aligned with actual costs is to break that project type into different categories based on acreage. So we have three different categories we would charge accordingly. And we feel very confident that the proposed fee that we're, we're showing, it does a good job of trying to capture the actual staff costs associated with these larger projects. Honestly, historically, Lone Tree hasn't seen very large subdivision projects up until the one we're currently processing right now. So it's been a good sort of learning experience for us to see what all goes into the review of a large preliminary plan, for example. And so that's kind of what's driving the proposed fee increases in that category, which does happen to be very involved relative to some of the other application types. So the next one, if you take that preliminary plan to the next phase, oops, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say next slide, yeah. But, so the next category would be a final plat for that single-family detached neighborhood. So again, since final plats are a little bit more straightforward, they tend to be very technical in nature. The current fee is $2,500. The proposed fee under this scenario would be just a nominal increase to 3,000. And then just the final category that I'm highlighting, and these types are really, they're not exhaustive of all of the fees that we have, they're just representative of the ones that we work with quite often. This one would be a final plat for a single-family attached project, like we did recently for the Ridge Gate Filing 2 project. We charged $4,500 for our current fee schedule, and proposed would be 6,000. Next slide. As part of this analysis, we certainly did a comparison of what our neighbors are charging for various application types. And I've listed a few examples here, I will say with a very large caveat, that you have to remember, different jurisdictions call different applications different things, they charge in different ways, they have different processes. But we, we feel, you know, very good that we've done a reasonable analysis of our neighbors, and the goal is to just, you know, try to make sure that we're in the ballpark of what others are, are charging, that we're not too high, not too low, and ultimately coming back to what makes sense for Lone Tree and our processes. So just again, by way of some quick examples, a typical SIP that we're proposing be charged, you know, again, depending on the size of that project, anywhere between 7,500 to 10,500. Our neighbors, as you can see, are, you know, it's, it's a wide range, and we've, we've done sampling of some other jurisdictions too, and they're across the board. You know, some, some jurisdictions will charge per sheet, some will charge per building. And so what we're doing is really, again, falling back on kind of that size and complexity component to drive what we think is a reasonable cost. The next category, again, is the preliminary plan, again, using a mid-size example. We are going up pretty significantly, and I think, again, the point there is that we are charging very little right now for our preliminary plan review. It's a steal, frankly, at $1,000, and that's regardless of the size. So you could have a five-acre preliminary plan area or a 500-acre preliminary plan, and you're only being charged the same amount. So our goal there was to try to tailor the fees that we are being charged to the size and complexity of the projects. Here again, you can see some of the comparisons, they, they vary pretty greatly. You know, subdivision fees can sometimes be charged per acre, like we're proposing. They can be charged by lot number, which is what Castle Pines does. I just did a quick example of, for example, at Castle Pines, just because they're, you know, a close neighbor, and they're dealing with some similar types of projects. For a project like the one that we're processing currently on the east side of Ridge Gate, they would have charged about $28,000 for that preliminary plan. So again, we think that with our proposal, which would be $24,000 for a project of that size, that we are very much within the ballpark of what's reasonable. And then finally, the final plat comparison that you can see here, we would be going up only by about $500 relative to our neighbors. We continue to think that's reasonable. Keeping in mind too, we have legal, outside legal consultant fees, we have outside surveyor consulting fees that maybe some other jurisdictions have in-house, so we are accounting for that as well. Next slide, please. So just in terms of kind of how we've done this analysis, and I want to do a quick shout out to Rashana Floyd on my staff, our senior planner, has done really the heavy lifting on all of this, because it was an extensive exercise, and really, we don't take it lightly when we're, we're proposing fee increases of any kind. We definitely want to do our homework, we want to feel good about the fees that we're charging and be able to defend them. And so some of the things we've taken into account are obviously looking at our processes that we have and our fee schedule currently, and developing some of those reasonable estimates for staff time. And that's largely based on our experience, frankly. You know, we, among us have many, many years of, of dealing with different types of applications, and how long typically those take, how much staff time, who's involved? Is it an entry-level planner? Is it a, you know, a senior planner? Is it the director? Is it the city manager? Sometimes it's a combination of a lot of different people. So it's not an exact science, but we are certainly leaning on our experience and working with, you know, a developer like Coventry helps us, because we have kind of a predictable player involved, and we, we kind of have a process and a system in place that we feel very confident that, you know, these processes aren't going to change very drastically. The other thing we do, obviously, is we've reviewed and compared the codes and fees from various neighboring jurisdictions, and we have very early on consulted with the city manager's office and the city attorney in developing these recommendations. Next slide. So just in conclusion, we think these will help greatly in finally offsetting the city costs and some of these processes. The proposed changes really are much more clear and less discretionary, and part of that comes from, like I said, breaking down these application types into different categories based on size and complexity. Previously, you would, you would see in the existing schedule, we have like a range of fees. Well, based on what? And there was no direction within the fee schedule to help us assess what those would be. So we've gotten rid of the range and replaced it with kind of these subcategories. Again, we think these are in line with the other jurisdictions. And I would just add that, you know, frankly, compared to other jurisdictions, Lone Tree is offering still, in my opinion, a very expedited review process for these, for these projects, and we hear that still consistently from applicants. And time is money, so I like to think of that as a perk that we, that we offer. And then finally, we are recommending the proposed changes to you tonight. Would certainly welcome any initial feedback that you have, or if we need to provide more information as backup, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, Kelly, is that it?
Yes.
All right, that was a lot. We have a hefty council agenda this evening, study session agenda. So, all right, Kathy, let's start with you on this one, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I, thanks, Kelly, really comprehensive, appreciate that. And I do think that the new categories are way more comprehensive for allocating those fees based on complexity. And that's what feels right, I, I think, as we move forward. So I like what I'm seeing, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, Jay.
Yeah, I think they're really reasonable, considering how much time and effort and energy staff and city attorney puts toward all these projects. It's competitive, so I appreciate that, Kelly, letting us know what our, our neighbors are, are charging, because we always want to be a very friendly place to do business, obviously. And the fact that we don't have an impact fee as well, I think it, everything is, as you laid out, is definitely reasonable from my end.
Mike, what are your thoughts?
I like that we've updated and we've been more inclusive. You know, I think it meets with things we've heard from residents about developers ought to pay their fair share, so, you know, we are getting our staff time compensated for. I think that's, that's all good. I did have one question, Kelly, in, in terms of the process, are there any considerations on quality of the input? And I'm thinking in terms of, you know, the expectation is when these people put these plans in that they understand our standards, and that they meet them the first time through, so we don't go into a repeat and repeat and repeat on reviewing. Are there any aspects to the fee schedule or to how we interact with them that deal to the quality of their input?
Yeah, that's a really, really good point. I think in, we address that in a couple of ways. The first is that we really encourage folks to take advantage of what we call a pre-submital meeting, and, and there is a standalone fee for that, so that, you know, they understand what the expectations and the, you know, submittal requirements are upfront, so that hopefully, when they do pull the trigger on a formal application, it's, you know, it's, it's as clean as, you know, we would hope it could be at that point. There's still going to be iterations, of course, that's just part of the process. But that's kind of accounted for in our estimation. We don't expect things to be perfect the first go around, they often take a few times still. If they start to get out of hand in terms of, you know, there are just things that, you know, they didn't account for, or the staff has gotten new information about, and we need to spend more time, significantly more time than we thought. We do have a provision in the fee schedule, there's a note proposed to the effect that we can charge additional fees. We would obviously have to, you know, invoice specifically what those are, what they're associated with, and, but we do have the ability to seek additional fees.
Okay, did that answer?
Thank you.
Okay, Win, what are your thoughts?
I like that they are more scheduled and less discretionary. I think that's not only a wise move, but it, well, it simplifies everyone's life and makes everything more clear for the applicant as well. So I'm, I'm fine with what you've proposed.
Great, thanks, and I think I am comfortable as well. I don't like to see the fees jump that much, that is troubling, but I think the fact that if they haven't been changed in close to 20 years, I understand the need to, to, to update them. And, and again, I think echoing council's comments, we want to make sure that they are always in line with what our costs are. This isn't an opportunity for the city to make money, it's to recoup the money. And, and as council member Anderson indicated, you know, have the developer pay their way in the process. So I think I'm comfortable with you, with what you proposed. I think the only question, outstanding question Win you raised was with the, with the fee to seal the courts. And I guess I recognize that the scenario you proposed is a, is a real scenario. I'm, I'm not sure how often that scenario occurs, and that, that this is in line, in my opinion, with statutory authority from the state. It is a state number that they came up with. I am comfortable moving forward with it. Council, I'd like to hear, Win, Win, could you, I mean, yes.
Sure.
The scenario you presented is an awful scenario on a whole host of levels, but.
And, and I'm, I'm actually comfortable with the fees. I'm, I'm, I'm unclear as to who should pay them, because it seems that that would be unreasonable for the victim of the process. But, but, you know, that, that could be taken care of by the parties or, you know, whatever. So I'm comfortable with the fees as they were presented.
Okay, all right. So I think that, that there's general head nods from council on, on the proposal from Jay and from Kelly tonight, so, thank you. I know that was a lot of work, and extend our thanks to Rashana, because going through all of that was pretty significant, so appreciate that. Okay, great. Moving on, we've got the Ridge Gate East Technical Supplement update from our Public Works Director, Justin. Justin, you ready to go?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of council. We're going to go through as quick as I can and update on some of the technical supplement we're working on for the east side. So next slide. I just want to do a quick background, just for everyone's familiarity. So the Ridge Gate East Technical Supplement was approved by city council on March 20th, 2018. And just, what is this document, right? This document really does provide the technical information in support of Ridge Gate East City Center and East Village subareas. These subarea plans are conceptual, right, by nature. When they first came in, it was very conceptual, we may build someday in the future. And this technical supplement further defines the engineering criteria needed for roadway design as it became really more real, and we started to work with real developers. There's a condition obviously in there too, that amendments that follow this initial city council approval will be approved administratively by the Public Works Director. So again, I just want to highlight, right, when we, when all these initial plans and great ideas came through in 2018, obviously, as developers come in, they start to refine those, improve them, and work with the city. So that is really what we're here today, is to present some of the more technical data that's come out as we've been looking into the, the current, you know, development that's going to start on the east side, how do we set a good baseline for that development? Next slide. Again, this document contains several appendices related to the design criteria. I promise I'm not going through everyone tonight, I'm just going to highlight a few of them that, that I believe are important at this point, and to give a good briefing on. This document also does create what I call a toolbox of options for design that can be used by developers within the Ridge Gate East villages and city centers. So this is not just for what you're going to see soon with Shay, but this applies to every development that will be coming in the future along the east side. And the reason I call it a toolbox is, you know, we want to be, provide flexibility to design what needs to be done, but also control the design, so we get streets that are maintainable, safe, and something that can meet the needs of our community. So that is what this document tries to balance as we develop it. Next slide. So don't worry, you do not have to memorize this, there's not a quiz or a test after, but if, if you have any questions on this, it is in the packet as well, if you want to get more information. But really, everything is in black, is what was included in the original document, the 2018 document. What we are proposing and working on is really the First Amendment. There will be multiple amendments of this document, right, as it's a living document that will continue to grow as we continue to develop. But really, what we're looking at is the First Amendment that would come through, trying to help clarify exactly some of the, the road options that may provide flexibility as we develop multiple types of housing units and other units on the east side. I have a lot more pictures to show this, so you don't have to remember. So I'm going to kind of go jump to those, I kind of, I'm going to show, show what was, direct comparisons, what was shown in the original document and what we're talking about today. And we'll go through each of these types quickly, and then stop me at any point if you have questions, or we can, I'll pause certainly at the end of the sections to go through them. Does that work?
Yes.
Next slide, okay. So what I'm trying to show here, what I call our cartoon image, but you can see on the left, this is what would be really for the east side, what we're looking at for the typical residential local street that has detached sidewalks. You can see on the right, there's a photo, right, that is taken in the Bluffmont area. There's a lot of detached sidewalk with 36-foot roads. And the road width is 36 feet wide, there's a tree lawn and a detached sidewalk. What we've looked at, the big change is, and I'll see on the next slide, but a lot of conversations happened about what is the right tree lawn size. Eight feet has proven to be effective in some areas and very ineffective in others for tree growth. And what a lot of the, what this option would provide is you better to go to a 12-foot tree lawn and get the right-of-way that would be required to do that. That way, you can really get a more substantial tree lawn than is maybe originally envisioned, or what you see in the picture above here. Next slide. So on this next slide, we have really side by side. So what is in the black and white, well, they're both black and white, but on the, the left is the original street that was shown for this detached sidewalk. It had a 67-foot right-of-way, and it did again have that eight-foot landscaping. You can see there's two feet of space behind that for variable things that may be needed. What we're currently looking at is modifying that section a little bit. It would be 71 feet of right-of-way to allow that big. It would be 71 feet of right of way to allow that bigger tree lawn. And what we do is we remove that two feet of extra space that was kind of a no man's land a little bit. And that would become a dry utility easement as needed on the property. So what we really try to do is look at, does it make sense to clean this up and really allow a little more landscaping space? And then also not have this sort of no man's land behind the sidewalk in the property that can typically cause some challenges and have to deal with them. Okay? Any, again, I want to, we have a note on this as well. This is really, again, the standard that would be applied for the mass majority of streets that you would see, much like is built on the current west side of the city of Lone Tree. Next slide. So another section that we obviously want to provide is a, a section with an attached walk. The detached walk is a great amenity, but it isn't really meant for every location. So there is obviously an, an option for an attached walk. What you can see here is the same thing. This image is in Carriage Club, probably familiar to many of the council people. So this, you know, similar width of road sidewalk type of cross-section that you would see in the existing Carriage Club and many other neighborhoods of Lone Tree. Again, there's a little error on the graphic. There's not going to be a lane strike going down the middle of the road so that the cartoon picture. But it, you know, we'd have a 36-foot road with five-foot attached walks on each side. And again, easements that would allow utilities to go as they need on the backside, street lights and other things, for example. Next slide. So as you can see here, again, a direct comparison, what was shown in the original document had a 52-foot right of way with the same exact 36-foot road, five-foot street. What we're looking at to make more consistency and sort of provide what is we've seen in other locations is what would be a 50-foot right of way. You still have the same road width, same parking, same sidewalks. Now what you do is you kind of modify that two foot of dead space again that's on the backside of the sidewalk and give us a little bit of space, more like 13 inches. So again, I know these are very technical, but again, what we're trying to do is kind of take these initial thinkings and, and really define them into what, some options to provide that sort of flexibility as we actually are getting to real property lines and those kind of conversations moving forward. And again, this would be the standard section applied to the mass majority of sidewalk, of streets that have attached sidewalks. I have two others to show real quick and then we can take the questions. So the next one is really a small modification to this. And really what this would show, same exact things we've seen. This is a photo in another neighborhood in Lone Tree that's again showing the attached walk that is typical. The only difference that you'd see in this section is if we really get some dense or really small lots, we may want to have that right of way line have just a little more flexibility to have that easements out there, depending on how small those lots are, and still provide enough street and width. We don't have, we wouldn't have to reduce the street width or anything. We just reduce down that outside right of way on rare occasions where we would need it based on lot size and some other potential criteria. So next slide. Again, you can see the road width would be exactly the same, 36 feet. We still have attached walks. Really the big difference and the one extra exception here is we're allowing that right of way line to come in, the property line right of way line to come in, an additional two feet. Again, this is not something we would imagine would be applied very many locations. But with the amount of grade and all these things that exist on the east side, there is a, a chance in the landies that this could be a reasonable cross-section for certain locations. But we would want to highlight that this section is only applicable for those kinds of conditions and one that would have to be approved on a case-by-case basis. Again, this would not be a, the standard would be the other two we showed. This is an extra tool potentially in the toolbox to move forward with. So again, these are all three similar, just some small modifications that allow a little bit of flexibility based on what we actually will be seeing put in place eventually on the east. Are there any questions? Those are kind of the three, the next one's a little different. So I'd like to, are there any general questions on that?
Okay. Counsel, any questions from anyone? I do, I do have a question, Justin, is sightlines for turning with some of these?
Yep.
And parking, I, I know that that is, has been an issue in the Ridge Gate West Village where there is higher density and the parking and particularly on this section FF. Have you thought about how this may impact sightlines and parking at, at intersections?
So, you know, the one, the one advantage we have is, is at least in what we're looking at all these sections, they are all, you know, 36-foot flow line to flow lines. We do have, you know, when we get to the curves and the radiuses, we didn't reduce the road width to get some of these things. You know, certainly I do think as we, you know, what kind of vegetation would go right up potentially against that back line is at corners and intersections is something that you'd have to look at, but that would exist in any really of these cross-sections. You know, we want to kind of pull those fences back, you know, to certain points, potentially that would be impacted. But the roadway itself and the parking, we, we wouldn't imagine having to restrict parking unless there's some unique circumstance.
Well, I will tell you, I am uncomfortable with some of the sightlines up, you know, particularly like at Commonwealth and Ridge Gate Parkway, trying to make a left turn in some, trying to make left turns is very challenging onto Ridge Gate Parkway. And I don't want to replicate that. So it could be a setback for the building as well. But I know we are, I, I want to make sure our building setbacks and we've also had issues with the landscaping, blocking, stop signs and those type of things. And so when, talking about narrowing spaces, particularly as this, this section shall only apply for non-standard residential development with higher density, that, that means there's going to be parking on that street. I'm just concerned about the sightline there. I really am. And I guess how can you, and I don't, and I don't expect you to answer that tonight. That is an issue I have before I would be comfortable accepting this is understanding how the parking and sightlines at the intersections are going to work. And that is a common concern I have for, for the, the Ridge Gate on the east side, on the east side. Because I think there are some lessons that we should have learned from the West Village and I want to make sure we're not replicating the same, some of the same challenges with sightlines. And those are related to setbacks and, and sidewalk widths and, and tree lawns.
Yeah, I think that, that's a great comment, Mayor. And, you know, those are, obviously we started to get some of these cross-sections, then, then how that applies in both a three-dimensional and two-dimensional when the roadways themselves come in is a, is a detail that has to be looked through and, and that may include all kinds of different adjustments at certain locations to make those things work. So I think that's a very good point and you know, maybe we do look at adding some additional conditions that would be applied in those cases when we go from really this concept to really that more three-dimensional level.
Yeah, I do, I feel very strongly it's something we need to address because I have, I have received, I have experienced and received a lot of feedback about some of the site triangles up in, in the Ridge Gate area. So, all right, that was my, my big one. Any, counsel, any other thoughts from anybody else? Looks like we're, looks like we're good.
Thank you, that's great. So the next section, this is, you know, so again, we were shown three very modified sections that is very similar in nature to the, what was shown with the original local street. The next slide, if we go to, is really a question and something we are looking at is today, if you go this, in this picture that you can see up here, you probably realize is, you know, up in Montecito. And within the Montecito, some of the new areas retreated Ridge Gate, those roads were all built as a 28-foot road that has attached sidewalks on both sides. Obviously that requires parking on only one side of the street. That is a, a Douglas County standard that is implied in several places as well. So this is an option that we have sort of looked at and considered to add in. It's something that in certain circumstances, when you maybe have some significant grade or some very significant horizontal challenges, you know, may be applicable. Again, only when you have some significant reasons that were justifiable to consider this option. So again, this is, you know, really, this is a little outside of the other ones you were showing, we're just tweaking. This would remove parking from one side of the street to really meet a need in, in very rare circumstances. I don't think you would see this much if ever, you know, rarely applied, but it is an option that moving forward may be needed in, in very select locations. Next slide, just kind of show that comparison. So when you're looking at these two sections, again, really the big difference is you have all the same sidewalk width, the attached nature, but the big difference is you remove parking from one side of the street. We had a note on here, which is really when we're looking at the consideration is this would only be an applicable section if all the other standards didn't work and for some reason there was a justified reason why the, the section we were just talking about, right? That, that FF, the 48-foot section wouldn't work, then this could be considered. It really adds an extra tool in the toolbox, but it's kind of like that tool that you never, ever use, but every once in a while you're glad you had it there. So that, that's really the consideration of putting this into the conversation. I would appreciate feedback on experiences or other people's thoughts about this. This one up. So that's really our, our, our question. I hope I can get some feedback on.
Okay. Counsel, any feedback? I, I'm going to call on you. Jay?
Yeah, just, just to the mayor's point, if we can use any common sense, things we've learned on the west side and apply them to the east side in terms of practicality, I think is a, is a good thing for us to be doing.
Mike?
I wasn't around in March of 18, so I'm not familiar with the old standards. Everything Justin says kind of makes common sense. I don't really have any issues. I would ask an unrelated question. Just for Justin to speak to it if he, if he thinks it's appropriate. How does these, how do these designs accommodate safe travel of bicycles?
Yeah, good question. So when, all the sections that we're talking about here are really our local street standards. You know, when we are looking at our more regional collectors, our materials, then that is where both the original document and anything we're looking at have additional bike lanes and spaces, right? Directly for them. These would really be what you would see in the very localized neighborhood streets. And typically, you know, most guidance is you want, you know, if you're going from your house right down to a connection, you want to have that nice local road feel. You have low volume, low speeds. They're fairly comfortable ride on, but as soon as you get into the collector network or any bigger street, you want to have a facility to get you then to a bigger facility like a cycle track. So the, the concept of how everything we built out is that, and certainly, you know, I'd imagine as, as Shea develops out and shows their preliminary plan, you'll see some of that as it moves forward. But that, that's really the concept. These are all local street and, and considered to be shared streets and really provide you that short connection to get out to the regional network that is going to be in place.
But, but to Mike's comment, this is, this is proposed in a higher density, this narrower street with parking only on one side. And my experience again in the Ridge Gate West Village is when we start limited parking on one side of a street in a, in a higher density area, it creates challenges and a lot of negative pushback from residents. And it does make it more challenging for a bicycle to navigate that space. So I, I, I think that is a real important issue that, that Mike raised.
And I would say if the section EE, that would be a potential, you know,
Yeah, I'm not.
Considered somewhere you have, having use of bikes, it would not be considered. Yeah, that's a, that's a valid.
Yeah, I am not, I, I am not loving section EE at all for a host of reasons. When, go ahead.
I, I guess I would agree with the points that have been raised. I, the, the one thing that concerns me, I guess, and it, and it is a matter of making sure there is room for everyone to park. Cause I do feel like Ridge Gate is, you know, very crowded sometimes and and so if we were to limit parking to one side of the street in an area where there wouldn't be enough places to park, in other words, where there are not, you know, adequate garage space or long enough driveways that you could park in single-family detached homes, I guess it, you know, it could become a problem. And again, you know, to Mike's point with the, the bicycles, it's, you know, you're, you're trying to open your car door and you trap a bicycle. It's, it's really bad. So, you know, I, especially as the road system gets narrower, there, there are more and more problems. So I, I guess I would echo the mayor that section EE would concern me should it need to be used.
Yeah, or the very inclusion of it in as an option. Particularly when we specify in a higher density, to me,
Right.
This, this being shown as kind of one of our standards, to me, this is not, not standard. This is exception with asterisk, asterix, asterix. So Kathy, what's your, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with all that. I, I do think that when we talk about high density, some of these things are required to make it all work, right? There's only so much space. We'll be more vertical than we will be horizontal. There'll be other parking solutions besides, you know, just street parking. That's how you make all this work. So I, I do appreciate the fact that we're trying to have these kind of options available, Justin. I know that, you know, you guys are trying to cover it all off well before the development starts. So I appreciate the thoughtful way that we're approaching it. But to Jackie's point, you know, like, we hope that from a development perspective, we won't have to go to these types of solutions. But I do appreciate the fact that we have them i- if the development does move in that direction.
Okay. And, and I'm going to really advocate strongly to not include something like section EE in the document. I don't think it is a workable. I don't think it's setting the city up for success. I don't think it's setting the neighborhoods up for success and I don't think it's setting the residents up for success. One of the things that we have learned is that people prefer to park on the street in front of their homes, even if adequate parking is provided inside, secure adequate parking is provided inside of the apartment buildings or multifamily housing where, where they're residing. We have continually gone back in the Ridge Gate West Village and marked and striped no parking in at least three neighborhoods that I can think of. And the idea of having this narrow of a street with only one parking on one side, which makes bikes even more treacherous in my mind, should be something that's brought, if, if it's needed to make the development successful or the proper, or that one housing multifamily project successful, it needs to come before council and council at that time needs to be willing to accept this decreased standard and then the community comments that will follow. Because having been through and having had the battle scars of the parking issues in our West Village neighborhoods, particularly our higher density West Village neighborhoods, I, I will not, would never support anything like EE. So I would let a future council make that decision and suffer the consequences.
Yeah, and that, that is very helpful. I appreciate the feedback of, you know, certainly like I was talking about, this, this section is, is a question. We try to balance all of it out, but certainly all the existing experiences we've had, how it would apply. So that's incredibly helpful feedback. You know, we can sort of take this back. And this is a working document draft at this point. So that is very helpful as, as we eventually come up with more of a, a final draft that, you know, we can incorporate that, so.
All right. Okay, Justin, what else?
Yep. All right. I'm going to go to the next slide and again, let me, so really the next, that was the big one. You know, really what, another piece that, you know, we are looking at is if you, what you're seeing on this slide is what would be the standard for the residential alley. Currently, as you can see, this would be a residential alley, private, not maintained by the city. But certainly, you know, as the east side develops, based on it trying to get a whole mix of different types of uses and properties, you know, certainly I think an alley section is needed. There was never an alley section provided except for what you see in black. And that black was intended, my understanding, you know, was to really be used for city center and would be publicly owned alley. So maybe rare exceptions. You know, You know, um, and typically this would be a str- an alley, this would be maintained by HOA, um, similar to some of the alleys that we have today. Um, and then the size would be twenty feet clear, which meets all fire code, make sure all those accesses to all the properties could be, uh, maintained, um, in there. And really this just defines that. Um, you know, first of all, it would be private, not to be maintained by the city, which I, I think is important. And then the second piece is just sort of some of those criteria, um, to be applied into it. Um, and then also having all the different, uh, site distance and requirements that would be required, uh, through that. There's a whole bunch of additional language in the actual document on this, but this is really the summary of it.
So Justin, just for clarification, can you, um, these, these are another thing we've had a number of issues with when in the Ridge Gate West Village. So how does this, and, and first of all, the biggest one was snow storage, even though these were maintained, what was happening is that the private plows were plowing all of the snow out into the city streets. And then the city was having to clear or make them, it was a very big issue for council guys. So how the snow plowing, uh, or the snow storage and clearing is obviously an issue, uh, with these. But also, Justin, how do these compare to the existing private alleys that are in the Ridge Gate West Village? Are they just exactly the same? Are they narrower? Are they?
It varies, you know, I, I, my, I, there is some variation in the alleys on the west side, so that's a little, um, but they would be the larger ones you've seen on the west side. There's a few smaller ones in certain locations. Um, uh, but yes, this would be really the, the larger ones, um, and what would be considered sort of the standard alley that's applied. This is the same standard I applied when, for an alley when I was in Denver, um, to kind of give that. You know, you can have sixteen-foot alleys, but they're really tight. So, uh, you know, really a twenty-foot alley is what you need to really make sure you got clear space to, to move everything and, uh, and we, and there is gonna have to be, uh, maintenance conversations about in these alleys and how you would do that. And then it, it would be written in a technical supplement, uh, that would, uh, require storage space for snow outside of the public right of way that could be maintained.
And how is that gonna be communicated to the residents who buy these? Because that was the problem. I think we had, we had that same requirement.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, but, and it wasn't violation of the requirement, but when it's the citizens coming and saying, you know, we're gonna have to spend X amount more dollars from our HOA to have our snow trucked away, they are not very happy with the city council when that, that happens. So, uh, and you know, that certainly wasn't something that people even contemplate when they buy their homes. Um, as we've all learned, the challenges with residential private property, private roads. So Justin, I guess, you know, that, that in and of itself to me isn't enough. Cause that's what we had before and we still ran into a lot of, unless we have the physical, unless we physically require a certain amount of space for snow removal. And, and are we requiring that, Justin?
Again, this is sort of, uh, the starting, you know, this is really the, 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 this is a tool, right? But yeah, I would imagine if there's a tools applied that you would have, that we could, we would require those type of, uh, learning lessons from the west side and, and you know, maybe there's a few extra places that would be put in there. That's as you get towards more of a final design type of thing with these alleys and roads, but yes, um, uh, the requirement would be in there. And then how we enforce that from what we learned is something we would have to, you know, work through with each developer, obviously as they're in, in case, but, uh, I, I think that is an extra standard, uh, that could be added into this, um, that would be applicable to, uh, anybody who would use this option.
Yeah, again, I really wanna position the city for success. I wanna set us up for success. I don't wanna see making the same mistake over again, which is a frustration for our residents and for council, and it's an expense for the city as well, even though these are private. It, it became a city cost. Uh, and that, so I really do think this isn't, tonight isn't it, but we need to address that issue, um, in some of these technical supplement, in, in a technical supplement. And it can't just be, we have an ordinance that says they can't do it, cause I'm telling you, they're gonna do it. So anyway, a- as long as this is a wider alleyway, sorry, council, uh, let, let's go through. Does anybody else have any thoughts on this? Wynne, why don't you start?
No, I, unless we could build, um, snow storage into the specs here, um, you know, I, which would take away some of the issues.
Right.
You know, no suggestions.
Okay, Kathy?
Yeah, nothing for me.
Mike?
Twenty sounds better than sixteen.
Yes. Absolutely. Jay?
Nothing for me.
Okay.
All right. Well, great. Thank you for that. That, that is very helpful. And again, I think this, you know, I would imagine there will be the need for some alley loaded products, uh, but certainly making sure it meets all those things and we can maintain it is gonna be key to that success. So.
Yeah, and Justin, can you let me know where the twenty-foot alleys are?
Yep, I will, uh, I was just thinking in my head right now, I'm gonna get a list of all the sizes and send it over. So tomorrow.
Because I have spent more time looking at, uh, the snow issues and visiting private alleys that are maintained by the HOAs in the West Village and I care to. And the good news for all of you guys is I won't be around when this happens. So maybe it'll be a new problem. All right. Thanks, Justin.
All right. And then the rest are, I'm gonna speed through these ones, cause the rest are not nearly as technical or detailed. So, um, the next slide. Really, I just want to highlight a few things. This is more the stuff I gotta work on, but really, uh, appendix B, again, we talked about appendixes. So appendix B is where all the traffic fun stuff is, all the traffic data. Um, so I was just gonna let, you know, a quick update. We are, will be updating the traffic model and plans when each village comes in, because again, it was conceptual. Now we eventually know what they're gonna be building. So we work with each of them to divide that. Um, this provides really a detailed analysis for each village. And the key here is to make sure we understand intersection traffic control, road design, multimodal connections. Right? Where do we wanna make these connections early? How do we make them safe? What kind of traffic control? Because the earlier we get all that kind of visioned out, instead of reacting like we've seen a lot of times, right? I, I think we have a lot stronger position. So we'll be, you know, this appendix and traffic study allows us to do that and focus really on the internal and the external network. If I sent this to you, the document's like two hundred pages long, so you probably wouldn't, but, uh, you know, we're looking through that right now, um, and working on, uh, the first village and how that is gonna, um, sort of overlay. But I did want to just give an understanding of what's gonna be included in it and really the reason. Um, so we can really get a, an understanding of the road network and then really focus on some of those details. Next slide. Last view. So appendix F, this is where, this was never approved today, right? This is a new appendix that will be approved with this first, uh, revision. And included as revision is guidance on accommodation of pedestrians and bicycles into intersection design and layout. So one of us, again, it was conceptual. This is starting to start the document that will guide how we wanna really highlight and protect our pedestrians and our bikes moving forward. So next slide. This is a fun engineering, you know, drawing, so, but really these are the kind of things that will be included. These are our works in progress, but you can see again, where we have a collector and a collector coming together, how we designed the bike lanes in there, how we make sure we accommodate all the ramps, the pedestrians, we're starting to really lay this out so that it is clear to everyone and developer coming in that these have to be prioritized. Um, we have other details like bike lane striping, our curb ramps, we even get to how much we want our crosswalks to look, right? This is all important stuff. So we actually get the developer to deliver what we want. Um, and, and this allows us to be a little more creative than the exact standards that are in Douglas County standards. This is more specific to what we're seeing being developed on the east side. Next slide, and then I can take, uh, a few other examples. What you see on the left, concept, um, we are looking at what the, some places they call these protected intersections. You don't wanna fly these many places there, you know, but there is potentially an option that this would apply in a few locations. And what you do in these is the bikes come out of the intersection and into the, a safer way to cross at a signal usually. Then they cross over and go back into the roadway. Um, you know, a lot of, uh, cities that are really focused on multimodal are looking at opportunities. So this is an opportunity I think would be great to put in the supplement and really work with developers to find the right location to build it. The last option is we would like to focus prioritizing where pedestrian crossings should be based on demand and where people are gonna go. And then we build the curb lines to match up, right? Versus what we've seen on the west side, where we sort of chase a problem and we realize pedestrians, we should have built this in. We really visioned out where uses are gonna be, how those pedestrian crossings, and then we make the curb lines bowl out at those locations in the initial design, so we have a safe crossing. So again, these are all the technical details, um, but all this is to focus on that bike and pedestrian action that we're gonna work on. And, you know, I'm excited about this, cause I know, uh, our team has a lot of passion about this and really trying to build out some of these new improvements that I think are gonna make the east side unique. Any questions on that section? I have one last one.
Anything on the, but I think we're looking forward to seeing more to come. A- and unless I hear a count, council member jump in, uh, we're gonna have you move on.
Right. Okay, wait a, uh, next slide. So the last one, this is an additional appendix, again, um, new appendix to be approved as revision. Included in this revision of appendix K is guidance on our ADA ramps and how to design them to fit the right of way. Um, next slide. The reason that we are really focused on this is for anyone who's familiar with our west side learning lessons, we have some ramps that we have a really hard time repairing or fixing, because we don't have right of way at the corners to fix them. And we have some ADA challenges with that. So we're trying to get way ahead of the game and let's show all kinds of ramp designs that could be needed based on different conditions, right? Detached to detached, attached to detached, all kinds of variable walks. And what kind of right of way requirements would we need the properties to give us? That way we don't trap ourselves in the future and we can build it. Um, so that's what these are showing, uh, but I did wanna highlight the importance of this because it is really a learning lesson from what we have had to experience on the west side and not try to recreate that on the east side. Uh, next slide. And this is the last one. So this is again, just different examples of this. You can see also that some of our bigger intersections, the one on the upper left, we're talking about creating a little extra space between the property line and the corner. Again, as a detail, so when we have to make an adjustment, we have to put an extra pull box in, we gotta put a street light in that corner, we have right of way, um. So these are things we've learned and then really when we were doing crooked stick traffic signal, right? We kept running challenges with this. Um, so these are the kind of things that I'm, I'm really trying to, the team is trying to start to incorporate in as learning lessons that we've taken and apply them at a detail level. So that is the last slide. And again, that's, uh, that's sort of all the appendices that will be included in our revision.
Great. Justin, I think I speak for all of council when we say thank you very, very much for this. I, I think, uh, particularly with the ADA issues, they have been a challenge and, and we appreciate the forward thinking. Is, are there any other comments from council? On any of this? Nope. Okay, I'm getting heads up. Justin, a lot of work. Uh, we very much appreciate it. We look forward to seeing, uh, actually what you bring back next on this, some of this stuff. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. All right, moving on, we've got the winter marketing campaign update and Jeff Holwell, our economic development guru, is gonna let us know what's happening there. Jeff, you ready?
Ready, uh, mayor and, uh, council. Thank you for your time tonight and, uh, this is a, a big change of subjects, but, uh, hopefully, uh, one that, uh, we can get through quickly and, um, um, with, uh, uh, your input as well. The, uh, um, the next, you know, few, uh, slides will be, uh, stuff that's been in the works for, uh, a little while now. Um, but something we wanted to, to, to talk with you about and, and give you a, an example of what we, we intend to do in November and December to assist our businesses and, uh, um, you know, bring people here to spend money in Lone Tree. Um, I will say the genesis of this, before I get into the slide, the, the two details here are two things. One, we've, um, you know, we recognize and I think, you know, of course the world's recognizing that winter is on its way. And our, our dining establishments especially will have to think of other ways to, um, serve their customers, you know, especially if they've gotten used to outdoor dining. Uh, and second, you know, we, we recognize that we'd likely have some excess CARES Act revenue uh, that would go away if we don't spend it by December thirtieth, um, because of its, uh, the way it's allocated. So what we're, um, we were doing is, is putting together a, a two-pronged plan to help, to, to help this out. And then we've added some stuff in between. Uh, first of all, the Lone Tree Business Alliance played a role in this and the, oh, the, um, uh, at least the, the, the content that we've delivered, uh, or Royal Deliver included a, a great panel discussion on October eighth around restaurants and breweries. They, they did a marvelous job of talking about how they reacted to the, um, uh, the pandemic, but also about what they planned to do. You know, when winter comes and they can no longer do some of the things they have been doing there for the past few months. And then next week on November twelfth, we'll be hearing from Pam Kelly at Park Meadows about what they also did, but also plan to do in the upcoming months as well. And we hope to gener- use this opportunity to generate community support as well as, uh, um, a promotion as well. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and then we, you know, of course dove into the, the, the dining, uh, concept, you know, safe dining initiatives, uh, have been the, the topic du jour, at least in the economic development world. And I, I would classify three things that, uh, we need to emphasize in the coming months. You know, takeout and delivery. And, uh, that, though, um, there's all kinds of, you know, neat ideas. I, I think what's really saved restaurants and what did the first time around and probably will again, um, in, in the winter is, uh, the, the success of, or the ability of restaurants to deliver their food to, um, you know, people that, you know, want it, you know, that won't need to come into the restaurant anymore. Uh, but the second has been, you know, the whole concept of, you know, you know, improving, you know, their outdoor structures, uh, or outdoor patios. And, uh, you know, there are all kinds of new concepts around structures and heaters and, uh, even grant programs. The next two that I mentioned are ones that we're promoting and that will help support the purchase of, um, uh, the equipment that people might need that, uh, they may not have the, the revenue to, to, to do. Um, even separate to these grants, uh, you know, there are many businesses, I'm sure you're noticing already doing a lot of this, uh, finding tents and finding, you know, the, the kind of things they'll need to do this. And I think given that we moved to level two and everything else, that we'll see a lot more of this in the coming months as well. And then finally, the state health department offered a great, uh, how-to packet for temporary outdoor structures in the winter and, uh, uh, it, it, it says what's authorized, not authorized and, uh, you know, how, how to, how to get this done, uh, in a safe way. And, um, we've made sure our restaurant community knows that about, is, uh, about that as well. And many of them are working off that, uh, template. Next slide, please. So one of the, you know, proactive measures that, uh, we're doing is, uh, helping our restaurants uh, acquire, uh, you know, a safe structure. One that is approved by the state health department and tri-county health are the, are these, uh, uh, eight to twelve-person igloos, um, because they would seat, but seat an individual party. And they are also, um, you know, whimsical and have a winter nature to them as well, but they, they are an approved, uh, 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 use and, uh, we've used some of our, well, we actually advertised to our, our restaurant community about, uh, uh, these opportunities. Uh, we've made a order of forty of these structures based upon what we think the demand would be using CARES Act dollars. Uh, we expect them to be delivered, um, in, uh, the next two weeks. And, uh, these are the, at least to date, the, the restaurants that have signed up for, you know, one or, you know, several. Um, to a total of thirty-six to date, you know, we have, um, you know, I think we'll even out right about where, um, that they, um, what we've ordered, but, uh, the, what we're, I'm hoping, keeping my fingers crossed they actually arrive on time. We don't have to pay if they don't. Um, but, uh, the, that, that our restaurants can actually use these to start. Um, i- if, if not only in getting people outside, bringing people in the door, because they have, uh, uh, you know, a fun and, um, advertising nature as well. Uh, next slide, please. And then, you know, it's, there is a, a, a couple of campaigns that we wanna focus on. One is not ours necessarily, but I think an opportunity for us in that there's a, the state small business development center network through their, um, leadership at OED IT is launching a shop local campaign. They wanna expand upon the small business Saturday concept and expand that through November and December. And, uh, what they intend to do is provide materials, um, schwag, um, you know, uh, the, the, the kind of stuff you would need to, to do a local campaign. They're, they're creating stuff that you can actually do your own local shop local campaign. And, uh, I, I see this just as a, especially for our Lone Tree residents, cause we have another initiative coming second. But at least for, you know, Lone Tree, we wanna help promote, uh, and use our economic recovery team and what I think could potentially be our youth commission to, to, um, be engaged in a shop local campaign. So as we get those materials, they said they'd be out by November first. Um, uh, we'll utilize them to, to get that going. And finally, uh, next slide, please. Um, you know, we intend to do a, a more, you know, the opposite of shop local. We, you know, we are obviously a regional economy. We'd like to see people shop and dine safely in Lone Tree and, uh, um, execute a winter advertising campaign or a, or a destination marketing campaign, you know, targeting both, um, uh, the, the, the mediums that attract people for shopping and dining, um, into the markets that somewhat may not even be our, our traditional markets, but also in many ways, we're, we're, we're just convincing our existing customer to, um, come back or, or, or still think about shopping and dining in Lone Tree as they had in previous years. And this campaign is one that, uh, you know, I wouldn't normally suggest a big expenditure like this. I don't typically do that, but because we need to use our CARES Act funds and it's important to restaurants, it's a, we've proposed to spend up to seventy-five thousand on social, digital, print, radio and PR, um, on a campaign that will last from November fifteenth to thirtieth, uh, supporting our retail restaurants and small businesses. And, uh, as of last Friday, we chose in Pulte advertising to be our, uh, vendor to do this work. They were part of a, a list of state approved vendors for advertising with, so we could actually, you know, do it much quicker. They have negotiated in cheaper price agreements. Um, and, uh, they have experience in this field. What I don't have for you tonight, because we just entered into, um, What I don't have for you tonight, because we just entered into an agreement, is what they'll actually be doing. We will have a charrette with them on Thursday evening to see what they've come up with and then, you know, hopefully get it to market, you know, by the 15th of November. We can come back to you with what they've come up with, but I don't even know what that is yet either. So that is my pitch, but, you know, the next slide is just the questions and comments and I'm happy to discuss anything that you have on your mind. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. And I think council will be very interested in seeing what Forte comes up with. But any other questions for Jeff? I'll quickly run through. Kathy, anything?
No, dig the igloo. That's awesome.
Yeah, I know. Kathy wants one for her yard.
I'm thinking how I can get my hands on it.
When?
Yes, I would take an igloo as well. No, this is wonderful that you found creative ways to, to help fund things for the businesses here. And I, I think you've done a remarkable job and I appreciate it.
Mike?
I think we're all in love with igloos. I'm ready to go dine. Jeff, I did have a question about the last program you were talking about and CARES dollars. Is there a component to this that makes sure it's inclusive, that people don't get left out, small businesses, individual businesses?
Yes. And I think our real effort is, you know, and partially because we have to, is encourage safe commerce in the city. And so largely it will be about, you know, just bringing people to the community for, you know, to all of our businesses. We don't have one specific thing that we're targeting. You know, the dining piece of it that is, you know, somewhat related and is related is, you know, those restaurants attract, you know, people that spend money in, you know, sales tax dollars. But the real goal of the campaign entirely is everybody, every, at least brick and mortar business that has a storefront. The answer is yes, Mike. And I also want to say that, you know, it's hard to know, like, we have one foot on the gas and the brake at the same time, you know? We want to promote people to come here, but also be very careful when you come here and, you know, don't get too close to each other, right? So safety is going to be part of the message or, you know, comfort and safety and maybe a little bit of normalcy is hopefully part of our message as well.
And Jay, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I think it's a great way to leverage the CARES Act dollars and I'm glad to announce the Carpenter family can fit into an igloo. So look for us at a restaurant coming near you.
Or an igloo coming near you. Yeah. Jeff, thanks. I think we obviously are going to be interested in learning more details as they, as they develop, but this is a great overview for tonight. And again, your great work to support local business in Lone Tree is very much appreciated. So thanks.
Thank you.
All right, council, we're going to, we're going to, the community development department update is not time-sensitive. We're going to push that since I've kept you here much longer than I should have. And then Seth, why don't you quickly just give us just a rundown of where we are with the COVID-19 update?
Yeah, we know how to wind up a meeting. So yeah, I'm happy to give you all a quick update. I'm actually going to share my screen now, Jay, and just pull up the state website. Are you able to see it?
Yeah.
Okay, so three quick things. So this is a public health order that was issued literally, I think I got a tweet at about nine or 9:30 last night is where this new 64-page public health order came out. There's not that much new in it. I don't want to worry you, but there are some, some small changes that are worth noting. But the big, what this really does is consolidate all the other public health orders, the stay-at-home, safer-at-home, protect our neighbors, all into one. And what that leads to is a change in the way that they have shown the dial. They've taken away the numbers, although they still show here on the website, and it's just going to be a green, blue, yellow, orange, red scenario. And so that's what we'll see going forward. It won't say safer-at-home level one, two, three. They'll still have that same description, but, or they'll still have the same color concept. But what I want to point out is this is the most current state or county level numbers. And what you can see when I had it back on the two-week incidents is that several counties are in some, are really at high, high rates. So remember, I don't know, a month ago when we were talking about entering into safer-at-home, kind of the, the green category? That shows, that would mean you're at, you know, really under 75 or preferably under 25 cases. And you see Arapahoe County is at 455. So they're in level, well, they're in the orange category currently. I could see that moving to a stay-at-home type of order before too long. It won't be quite the same as what we saw in March and April. I think, you know, we've learned a lot about, you know, playgrounds are not a problem, tennis courts aren't the problem, but it will affect in Arapahoe County if it goes that direction, non-essential retail and restaurants. The difference in restaurants is that while they won't be able to have any indoor seating different from in the spring, they would be able to continue to operate outdoor seating even in the stay-at-home category. One other difference of note is that liquor stores are considered non-essential, but still will be able to operate curbside and delivery only. Again, that's in the red level, the stay-at-home, which is where, right now, Arapahoe is trending and kind of to the mayor's point toward the top of the meeting. And then, so Douglas is still not where we want it to be either there. We are in a higher incidence rate as well and as of yesterday, still kind of climbing. 337 is not where we want to be again. About a month and a half ago, we were in that, you know, 75 range. And so we're not seeing, we're not seeing the same growth as others, but still not where we want to be. So what the state always tries to do, and I credit them, is they try to distill that, you know, 68-page public health order into, okay, what does this really mean? This is something that we'll have a link to on our website and also are sharing with all of our businesses because we just went to level yellow or we're in the process of going to level yellow, which was formerly number two on the dial. And no major changes from last night's public health order on that. You know, I do think, I don't want to predict, but there's some chance that if that number continues to go up, we could slide into the high-risk category. I hope we don't. There's, you know, additional capacity changes, you know, restaurants and others really have pretty limited capacity. The update, though, is that a lot of indoor settings still are allowed and even in the lowest protect or safer-at-home level. So there's some capacity changes that actually bumped up a little bit in some of those and even including in gyms that in previous orders weren't included or weren't allowed to stay open. Still have very, pretty limited amount of capacity. So that's it for public health orders. Happy to answer questions. I do just two other quick updates that are, I was at Sky Ridge today and got an update on their capacity or not their capacity, but where they're at as far as cases. They currently have 36 people hospitalized at Sky Ridge, 14 of those were in the ICU. I did not get the impression at all that they're nervous about, you know, having enough capacity. I think they feel like they're in pretty good shape and really they're the best ones to manage their capacity and aren't really welcoming of sort of others sort of dictating how they manage that. So I felt pretty good about that, although I wish those numbers were both lower. And maybe the most positive news of the day, and I think a couple of you were on the tri-county call, is that tri-county found out that there'll be one of five distributors in the state of the first vaccines that are coming to Colorado, which are going to be shipped and stored even before they're probably going to be authorized by the FDA with the idea that as soon as it is authorized for emergency use, that they could be immediately distributed. I don't give us, I did not get a sense of the scale and I don't know if tri-county knew how much they were going to be able to get, but just, just the fact that, you know, we're working ahead of the problem a couple steps rather than saying, okay, it's approved, okay, let's start making it, okay, let's ship it. It's where we're making it, we're shipping it and then just waiting for the, for the green light for it to be distributed. And really good to know that of five, you know, entities approved to help distribute it, tri, we're, we're a part of one of those, tri-county. I think it speaks well of their reputation. So that was a lot and relatively fast, but happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Seth. Okay, council, any, any quick questions for Seth? I know everyone wants to get back and look at the results on their screens. Seth's showing us happier days of Broncos victories there. All right, well, guys, thanks for your extended time tonight. Hopefully everyone will still be able to eat some dinner. I want, I want to encourage anybody who's listening to us to please look at the City of Lone Tree website, cityoflone tree dot com and lonetreeartscenter.org for some exciting things happening at the art center. There is COVID community testing outdoors at the Lone Tree Art Center every Monday from nine to three. I want to close this meeting with an acknowledgement of our veterans. We've got one on council. We want to say thank you for your service and for all the awesome members of the Lone Tree staff that have served us, served our country and sacrificed so much for us and all of those that aren't with us and the ones that are still serving. I think we all send our support and blessings to them and, and let's all keep praying for this awesome country we have the privilege of living in and have wonderful men and women that have served and are serving. So with that, thanks, guys. I hope you're all well and stay healthy and happy. Okay? And that concludes our study session. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good one.
Thanks, Seth and Jackie.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.